My name is my name. Yeah, so I have a name there.
Okay, just so you know, I have a little blog and YouTube channel, so you're live right now.
Yes, so best behavior there. Well, good afternoon. It is two o'clock, I believe, at this point in time. And we welcome all of you to the Board of County Commissioners of San Mest County. This is basically an introduction for the company that's going to be installed in the railway from the Jansen yard all the way to the mine. So let us call this meeting to order. Commissioner Luiz Lopez, would you please give us an invocation?
Heavenly Father, please help us with the decisions that we make on behalf of our town and citizens in our community. We thank you for the moisture of recent days, and we look forward to having more in your precious name. Amen.
Miss Torres, would you please lead us on a place of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, Mr. I, since I don't have the agenda, there's no change to the agenda.
Commissioner has? Commissioner Luiz Lopez? Mr. Pete Soltes?
So no changes to the agenda, just a couple of motions to approve the agenda.
Salute.
Second motion. Thank you. So, Commissioner has?
Mr. Luiz Lopez? Mr. Pete Soltes?
Yes. Item one A is introduction to the rail company for the track that's going to be moving the coal from New Elk. A couple of just formalities in the event that, just information. If there is going to be anything that this board may have to make a decision later on, i.e. an additional use for the track, you will get a basically a reminder from us that perhaps we will table that information for future meetings. But welcome once again, and it's an honor to have you here. And I believe you wanted to show with us, to show to us a video? Yeah, we can arrange that, and certainly if you want to.
I think it would be a good idea to say who we are and show you about how many goals are explained.
Very good. Very good.
So while we're doing. Do you want to go, Jonathan?
I guess firstly, thank you for having us here and putting this meeting in motion. It's an honor. Welcome. We represent a company called Martinez Rail in Australia, and we'll give you some handouts. It's a privately owned rail infrastructure company. My name is Jonathan Schwabsky. I'm here with Kevin McAlpine. I do business development, including our plans for the United States. And Kevin's a project director who run our major projects in Australia. So we're a privately owned company. We employ about over 1,000 people. We work across Australia, New Zealand, and in Chile. And through Allegiance Coal and New Elk Mine, which is an Australian listed entity, actually, we've been introduced to them, so we're looking to help them to develop the project.
Only tested it before.
Talk to it.
Yeah, let's hand it out. Sure.
Thank you.
Did it run out of battery?
Battery's full.
Yeah.
So I can say, so our company started 16 years ago by a founder who was driven by things. And still we see how we've been on a steady growth path. And in recent years, we picked up, we just finished a if you look at the project, if you just turn to the middle, there's a project called the Adani Rail Network. There's two pages. And that was a mining railway, which is 210 kilometers. And so it's got some, it's a greenfield project, but we work in upgrade projects, new rail projects across Australia, New Zealand. So as part of this company that we're having, we met Allegiance Coal and New Elk Mine, and we're looking to come in to help put that project together and also actually help with the funding for that. So the reason this model is, we're looking to like own the operation of the rail network for for New Elk Mine and we're going to concentrate on their mining, you know, their core business.
So certainly not a short term play, a year and looking to springboard out our US operations out of the back of this project. So very, very excited to be welcomed into your town. I think a couple of things about our company. We work generally remotely, very remote locations in Australia and New Zealand and Chile. So we used to be integrating the small communities, and we certainly want to continue that here as well.
So when you do a relocation of a project, do you hire the local?
Yes, generally with our business model goes, we have a few key senior people, but really try and tap into the local network. We don't think it's an add-on or a good to have. We think it's an actual good buy-through business because the locals supply chain, they know easily, they have everyone to talk to. So that's how we really try and get in and get in with locals. And this will be a long-term play for us as well.
So that project, we, in Australia, we have engaged heavily with the indigenous community, with the local town, we reset that town up for them to that project. We hired, Kevin ran that project.
Yep. We invested about $16 million in the immediate local council or community area. And the project was nearly $700 million in total. So spent a lot of time and money in the communities and really booting them up and giving them pathways for sponsorship that break the ship all that.
So this is going to be a very small project, yeah, but it's going to be a good introduction to the United States market?
It is, yes.
Good. So it's a significant project for the town and for the asset as well. Because from what we understand, you know, the trucking, we're taking more trucks off the road, which is good for the community. That happens a lot in Australia, though. The railways are trying to say, if we can add a rail line, how many trucks can we take off the road? What can we, you improve the community?
And thank you for initially, when I didn't know that Allegiance Coal and your company are pretty much sisters, subsidiaries, and single brother?
Well, we're not owned by the same thing. They're just from Australia.
Okay.
Yeah, it's an introduction to.
We just got an introduction. Oh, we have a separate ownership structure.
Very good, yeah.
So the steel that you'll be using for this project is US steel or is it still?
The quality we've seen in the model so far is US steel. Now, I'd say no reason, you know, we would be looking to use local US steel.
Is the local steel mill, what will manufacture in rail? Do you guys know?
I think we've got quite a set of progress routes. I'm not sure whether they actually manufacture.
I don't know if they manufacture rail anymore.
No, I'm sure it will be US steel here.
And what's your workforce look like for this project?
I hope it's 50 to 100 at its peak. Obviously, there's, you know, along the 30 odd miles, there's a significant number of bridges that have been there for a long time. So they'll need to be upgraded. A lot of the colts need work before we can actually start to think about the actual track construction. So it could be up to 100 plus by the time we really hit it, sort of coming into summer next year.
So by using local employees, then wouldn't that be a big house influx that we're experiencing now with the rail, correct?
So that's obviously a challenge for you. You know, one of the things I was going to ask is, it's good for us to know what your if we can work with our communities like we do in Australia to make sure when we're planning the project to understand what your needs are. Not for us to come in and say, we think we know it, which is good for.
And you're doing a really good perspective with meeting hopefully with other constituents as well, you know, from the perspective of the county. Obviously, we do a lot of permitting for some of the projects, but as far as the prerogative of how you perceive the project is pretty much going to be up to you. We'd like to make a recommendation on this. They tell you the local contractors. That would be great. Local employees and of course, for us is the influx of revenue for our community via employees on and so forth. And you know, one of the things about remote areas of rural America is that post-pandemic, people are really wanting to get back to work. And even if it's a 10, 14-month project, that could give an opportunity for someone that has been waiting on the sidelines to get into the workforce. What a great opportunity.
And we've always developed people for long-term retirement. We bring that same culture. So there might be a job right now. We're looking at a few rather long. So if we've trained that person, or they've got an opportunity, they could continue to work with Martinez.
It's obviously construction is fairly cyclical in terms of projects come on and then they come off. So we try and really invest in our people and, you know, not just send them off after the contract's done. If they're living here, that's great. We're based in here.
I think we're meeting with a local contractor. I can't remember the name. I'm sorry. To help with the early works, which is the cleaning of all the colts, the brick, you know, that clearing the works. So I think that's good, giving them an opportunity. The local quarry, we're talking to the.
Called quarry.
The ballot for the ballot, so doing the best we can.
And the contractor.
Quick question. So the comments that the chair made earlier, do you know the timeline of this work?
Yeah, we have a rough. Yeah, so we'd like to get started by this summer, if possible. The civil scope needs to be actually complete before the track guys come in because they'll lay it fairly quickly.
And do you have a projected sunset? When would it be done?
It really, a couple of things depends on weather. That depends on mining ramp-up profile, but you know, certainly we would be looking to sort of mid next year to be having line fully in service. So I think.
This is our first trip. We're just doing some due diligence, meeting all those state commanders, trying to finalize those numbers. But the idea is, what Mark told us, we're all kind of heading towards that meeting mid '23.
This is my first time. I turned in today or yesterday or last couple of days.
Did I exactly?
Have you gone up to the mine yet?
No, we're going now to Mark's.
Yes, but you know.
You're going to fall in love with this area. It's beautiful.
Oh, I mean, you know, I've studied extensively on Google Maps and some of that stuff. It's great, actually.
We were reading some of this.
Forget about the whole area of the Garcha Stonewall area at least.
Yeah, you know, then of course, Caitlin, as she lives up on that part of the Cali, and as family, we have a little bit of property up there that's just beautiful to get away. You'll see from the landscape, from the plains to the mountains, what a great concept of actually having a you're going to be basically leasing your services to Allegiance Coal.
Yeah, well, and it's, yeah, in essence, there's a construction element, but we're also taking a long-term commitment to your problem. So.
So we'll maintain the lines. So we'll permanent employees here, based out of here. And yeah, we'll basically have ownership rights over that.
So traditionally contractors might come in, Kate, we built it.
And leave.
And it's a very sort of low-touch thing, but in this model, we'll be owning, if we finalize everything, we'd be the not completely the land owner, but you know, the asset infrastructure owner, because it's our responsibility to keep it maintained over a 15-year period. So.
Years ago, I worked at the Lawrence Institute mine.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and so sometimes I worked on the loadout up there at the top of the rail spur. There wasn't much maintenance done during that time on the rail. And I don't think there was quite much need for it because there wasn't a lot of activity. It was a small operation. However, what is your maintenance plan for keeping that rail, to keep it safe for pedestrians and everybody else alike? But the main thing is.
We were talking today, we didn't have a format to play in place.
What you generally do is do, we have an inspection regime based on the designer's recommendations, you know, go and look at them three times a year. The thing we really are going to have to look for is the degradation of some of those bridges and how we do a replacement program once we've got them back up to, back up to scale.
And who's the regulatory organization that oversees the rail?
I believe it's the other core engineers. I think that's the richest.
Our great fears. And so is it going to be concrete or?
It looks like it'll be timber slippers at this stage, but when we look at it, it's concrete. Australia, it's all concrete now, so.
As well as most industries.
Yeah, Australia went away from timber or concrete. We're not quite the network here in the US.
But that's longer.
Yeah, plus we don't have the supply.
So they just pull the plug out.
Yeah, so we usually, when we grow in the regions, we end up buying equipment, we invest in our teams, we we hope that this project can be a springboard for us working in the region. You know, I think it's nice to have that opportunity. Hopefully, it's very exciting for us.
Do you ever have any other projects here in the States?
No, not currently.
So this is sort of our opening.
And that's why we'll be using local or regional contractors, and local as much as possible.
It's interesting that we have all of these Australian companies coming in with New Elk and.
And Asos.
They're starting.
Yeah, because I was in Australia and I got introduced through some, I think one of the shareholders of Allegiance to Mark in Vancouver and then started talking. And then we worked out this deal. It's been quite, it's, the arrangement is very, we see it as a partnership. So it's not a real transactional, it's not a transactional relationship with Allegiance. It's already very much a working together, you know, together.
Are you guys going to be using crouch engineering, the engineering for this?
That's how it looks, yes. Yeah, well, because we have taken it over yet from, so the work that they're doing still to prepare is coming along. And now we're in our final due diligence stages to sign out. We've signed an MOU or a term sheet with Allegiance. And we now are finalizing those details. But we spoke about this with them yesterday and with some other industry people, and they have a good reputation. And it seems like the work they've done.
They've been crouched?
Yeah.
And then secondly, and this is coming way off the rails, again, is your company dabbled in fast rail?
With the high-speed trains? It's the biggest stopping in Australia at the moment is can you get faster rail? Like, we haven't got any in Australia. We've never been able to get them up financially. So we'd like to be part of it.
So we've done faster rail, like trainings and stuff, but not really high speed. Because Australia's like, doesn't have a lot of high speed. But we have the, we have the complete skill set you'll see in in the sub-metro projects, which is the same kind of track, track formation skill sets, like slack track, where you don't use the timber ties or the concrete ties. You have a full floating, you have a slab, so that keeps the tolerances tight for them to have faster rail.
They welded where?
We have, yeah.
We made it. So they're like spars as well. So since you open that door.
Yeah. Yeah, I came up interested.
Are you guys familiar with the Senate bill that happened in Colorado last year, 21238 regarding the high-speed rail from Wyoming border to New Mexico?
No.
I thought maybe that's why you're here, to get your feet in the door.
Oh, no, we are.
They're going to Senate bill pass last year, and they're going to try to, they still got some hoops to go through as far as to get a taxing district. The district's going to be the counties up and down the front range, it's called I-25.
Right.
And then those districts would be the funding mechanism if the board's passive. And then the construction would start a little bit from.
Is that what will be the government profit industry partnership kind of thing? Is that what?
It's a state.
State of the game.
So that's probably coming down the pipe in the next two years.
But certainly the intent is to, yeah, this is our basis to establish a business here and go, you know, boxing with the infrastructure spending bill that we saw all getting passed.
I'd like to hear that, but this is going to be the case.
Good timing.
Yeah, there is that infrastructure spending, isn't there as well? They're, um, have paused recently for rail upgrade.
Hit the lab radio there last week. They were trying to spend it before we even got it. But the taxing district hasn't even been set up yet. It hasn't gone to the voters. And it's a couple of politicians up north who are ready to spend that money before we receive it. And matching using that transportation fund you're talking about for RARPA funds and the government funds. But that's not done till yet. So it still has to go to voter people.
And how do you feel that the high speed would affect your community? Would you have a, where would it run? Do you know? Or is it that?
I think it's going to really affect the metro Denver, Scarborough Springs area the best. That's why some are opposed to it, some are for, we, I'm not against high-speed rail. I'm just, the way the taxing forward, how they're going to pay for it is one. And then the eminent domain factor of it is another one that I'm not a big fan of. It's board, in fact, is not a big fan of eminent domain whatsoever. So we'll see how it goes. And it's going to be up to county by county. And a lot of these commissioners will have to represent their counties properly moving forward for their project. I'm not against it. I think it will save a lot of traffic on highways and also better bank your buck, have a decent locomotive one to put down.
Yeah.
Transport people. But, you know, there's some issues with that ballot, with that Senate bill. But other than that, no, I think it's a good idea overall. This is a couple of things we've worked out. You know, who doesn't want to ride a train?
There's a lot of the freight ground here from here to the Redefield and the rail network as well.
Yeah. Will that be a rail for freight on that?
Fast rail freight is going to be specific.
No, but it's currently.
So you have been in SIF?
To Houston.
Okay. Stray to Houston. So there is connectivity. One, of course, the, all the states received on the infrastructure, on the federal appropriations, several billions of dollars to actually carry on some of the projects. And right now in Colorado, one of the biggest priorities has been roadways and bridges and that type of infrastructure. Because some of the roadways and bridges have not been replaced forever. But again, I think the conversation for fast rail, for us, it would be the right to have in the number of people together right here in Trinidad, unless we go all the way to into New Mexico and El Paso, then people can travel up and down the front range to Denver. And there hasn't even been a communication and conversation that this could be connected even outside of Colorado. So we'll see where it goes.
It's good to see that the thinking is there.
Yes, and you know, as far as, as far as your company here, I mean, you guys have a project just about everywhere in Australia.
Yes. No, not, yeah, all forms are, I think around this area, the keys, which are very solid industries for us, is the freight line network, that kind of rail upgrading, extending. We're also very keen in developing what we call in Australia intermodals, and I think you call sits. Like where you take storage from trucks to the rail network or for, you know, an intermodal is a conversion of that thing. We haven't started investigating very much here, but I think that's quite, we see a lot of communities in Australia interested in improving or getting their community to connect to the main lines, you know, for businesses here to receive and send goods. So I think that's interesting as well.
So I think this conversation, one of the questions is, you've got acquire all the right ways between that you need to build the line, I would imagine.
Do you look on the mine line?
Yes.
Yeah, and currently that negotiating and that really sits still with, you know, Allegiance of New Elk. But we are in that conversation with them at the moment. I think there's two two individual companies that own the easements or the rights that we need to negotiate with or talk to them and work out. So those are underway.
Yeah, I hope that gets carried to an equity startup or something.
Yes, well, that's part of what our, us coming here before we get to start, and we need to understand all that.
Oh, you're not sure before, yeah.
I think there's a family that owns a portion of the line. And then there's the company called AK Railroad or other company that are involved from when you used to have the line.
Texas bill, that may be a hurdle, but.
Well, that's what we're here to find out and see if we can help with that.
And that will set a large amount of timeframe, you've talked about before, as well, when all those things get resolved. A lot of the state and federal approval is starting to come through, so road crossings and stuff like that. But traditionally, that can take a longer amount of time. They'd actually secure those, so.
And is what, how many crossings are crossed? Maybe just the one there in Western Brazil?
Yeah, I think it's just one. It's 35 crossings in time. It's a big, big number.
Yeah, one of those things is quite big at region points, apart from Australia, which is trying to do great separations for crossings, whether on major intersection, you know, to take the rail over the road. But that's quite a lot of cost. But it's, you know, for the community, I know costs can be we've worked on a project where we helped educate the community as well about safety around crossings. I think those things are useful as well in any project.
But in a similar situation to what you have here, that mine was down for a very long time. People just got used to not seeing trains there. So when they recommissioned it after sort of 20 years, it was down, they had to have a whole education place to go with it. So people, you know, would walk around and all those sorts of things.
So in the maintenance side of it, and I'm looking and thinking outside the box here a little bit, mitigation wise with the sparks and stuff, do you have a team with a mine taking over that?
No, we would maintain, we'd have a team that advised here, so that we do it, tampering, regulating, you know, defective welds, all that sort of stuff.
But once you get up there, you don't want to have a fire there.
That's wrong.
If they were fired up in Torres, when I worked at the mine, we could see glowing, you know, it was scary. So that's another big thing is fire safety. So maybe also you guys, next time you're here, if you can't get with fire marshal or sheriff and everything.
Absolutely.
With emergency management as well. You know, possibly, once you get the project going, I would recommend, you know, we meet with Kim Chavis, our emergency manager. And I'll go over the scenarios in case of an accident. Our kind of emergency operation plan.
Yep.
May I ask a question?
You should may.
So if this is a project, do we, do they need to get some kind of permit from Bobby for their land use for this project for construction or anything?
No, I don't believe so, since it's already established. We have enough jurisdiction.
Okay, I'm just wondering, unless I miss counting, if a project has to come before the planning commission?
I don't believe so.
I was just wondering about that. Because also, too, any kind of, any kind of materials or supplies, would we collect 1.5%? Because if this project is so large, any materials purchased, we have a use tax to where the county would actually receive 1.5% from the, from the, from the sales tax.
Is that for?
That's what I was wondering.
All the purchases, materials on, you know, a little bit of, you probably already know, having looked over San Mest County, the largest county in the state of Colorado. And we are in the largest group throughout the United States land lands. The, recently, I happened to be in Washington DC representing Colorado as one of the county commissioners. And when we put the map of Colorado, and I highlighted the San Mest County, some of the commissioners from New York City said, that's bigger than New York. And I go, indeed, it is, population-wise. And so we go back to the common. The, we have so many roads, probably linear models, we have enough roads to go from here to Los Angeles.
Yeah, New Zealand is too, I suppose.
Yeah, or from here all the way to the, who knows, probably New York. And so we maintain a lot of the roads and we depend upon obviously any little bit of tax revenue that we have to maintain for the, for our constituents throughout the county. One of the, one of the things that we have in the county, you can actually drive probably three, three and a half hours from one side of the county to the other side. And you're still in the same as the county. And so.
It's not Australia, I mean.
We're talking a little wide there as well.
So that's, I really appreciate.
Fair enough.
We never leave home the country.
Well, that will be, you know, it's like, it will be some sort of a revenue for us.
Right, any kind of materials, you know, I don't know if you're going to purchase it here in Colorado?
If we can.
If we can, yeah. We tend to try and get mine first and then go out and follow regions.
So like, for example, there's the balance, the stuff, you know, that goes under the rail. Apparently, there's a local supply.
Sure. So if you do that, then the state of Colorado will handle that because it's called destination sales tax. And it'll, it'll actually, we will receive it. If you purchase anything out of the state, then you have to probably calculate whatever it is and send us the 1.5%.
Right.
On the material.
Yeah.
So just, just so you have that information.
Yeah, all material purchased for the project.
Correct, but the state of Colorado, if you do it within Colorado?
Yeah.
They will actually, um, say, take care of that for us.
Oh, it's, how do you think comes outside of Colorado?
Right.
So I guess you, we're not able to put the, yeah, by.
I do apologize, my computer seems to have died, twenty minutes ago, but it's fine.
Oh, okay.
Hold that button down.
It's raining, good.
So.
Someone else, I think, send you a link.
Sure, you said it, the link.
That would be really good.
It's a good fish, too.
Just let me work that, I'll do that.
It's got a problem with the.
I've got it here, because it's just on YouTube.
Oh, we've been struggling, we're, we're from the sea, so, yeah.
Um, how, who do I send it to?
Send it to.
Send it to Los Angeles County.
L A S.
L A S.
A N R I, M A S, county spelled out.
County.
Yeah.
A G.
We've got to put more on YouTube before we left, so we didn't have to have a shoot on it.
That's all, we'll look at it, anything else you would like to add to this conversation, to this introduction?
No, first of all, thank you, thank you very much for.
Well, thank you for keeping us in mind and welcome to the San Luis County, and we wish you success.
Right.
And certainly employ every local that you can.
We will.
Yeah, certainly, we, we are looking for our own.
Yeah.
Welcome to Colorado, welcome to the United States, and certainly, I, I, I hope this is gonna be a conversation that goes on for.
Yeah, right.
Thank you, Caleb, for putting this together. Taking the mice fishing.
How did you guys?
Going to final days. You're off on water?
No. Well, yeah, it's kind of a bit too long. Yeah, we saw it yesterday getting ready in Denver, and I'm like, what are they putting on the ground, like, we were just so not used to, it's the middle of our summer back in Australia too, so it's very, very hot.
We got a friend from Melbourne, they used to visit us here.
Okay.
And we always said we were gonna, but, so you go from here to L A S.
I did here, L A, then L A, Brisbane, or Sydney, and then Sydney, Brisbane, so, yeah, thirty hours, not a door, no matter how you, how you do it.
Yeah, it's still out of the swing for us.
My youngest is also. Otherwise I could just talk in, you could just type the YouTube address in.
Caleb, does the mine have a, a, process so far, or a company that they're gonna be using BNSF, or what?
I, I don't know if they have a counter.
So I think, speaking to Mark, it's BNSF or UP.
They're hauling it now from the Jansen yard out.
That's right.
That's right.
They did a trade, did they love, I think they did one last week.
So they're making progress on their.
We're, we're at the mine, the district mine, I think we had our own.
Right, running up and down.
To get to the yard.
Yep.
Down here, and then they would.
Yeah, I was, yesterday, they were saying that either one of the two, they'll both go all the way up to mine, so, which was interesting.
Yeah, it's scary, that was a Tennessee Valley Authority contract, made at the town chief or somewhere else, we were saying.
Is that right?
Yeah. So, but it wasn't metallurgical.
And that's the, yeah, met coal processes is going crazy, I mean, Australia, they go crazy, so they just can't get out of the ground.
Right.
Not the, not the, Robman, Robman.
Oh, good to see you.
It goes down generations.
All right.
Question.
Where's the graveyard shit? When that fire was happening, there's.
Like you can see that.
To equal, little, four L, stood present for eight L.
There we go.
So you guys right now?
That's an H I or H L?
H L.
P U, R J.
Yeah.
This person.
We might say the.
Yeah, you said it, they do, they watch it.
Maybe just probably lots of wine.
Yeah. We just came off a project in, in the middle of central Australia, so it's very, very hot, and thousands of people in and out every time, and in Australia, they're shutting borders with the, with COVID, so literally you can hear people up and down, so it was a, yeah, it was a.
So you're pretty, Australia is one of the toughest countries.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, yeah, we've only just, still got mask mandates wherever we are, I mean, we've only just opened the borders to other states, and there are some states that still got them closed, so.
I don't think it's commerce.
It's struggling, everywhere in, it's struggling, if money's handy, it's in, to be fair.
It's very resource, dependent.
I don't think the volume works.
I think that was good for, for Colorado.
Yeah.
Full screen, yeah. I was looking at the pictures of this run rail, and it looks like it's depressed into the rail.
Yeah.
So apparently you don't have a wet season.
That truck.
So it's a, a Dali?
That's, yeah, it's a thirty foot car, so when it runs, that doesn't mean it's on one hundred and eighty, so when it runs, it goes all the way. We have a boss, are you sure?
Yeah. This is the two hundred, take a couple of that three foot. Hundred miles back, and two hundred.
Yeah.
The driving tour, I could call her, but I believe on that project is very important, which is, then it's very interesting to do, to pay for that. That's in the metro tunnel, I was explaining to do that kind of work as well, so it's a core of the slap.
Yeah.
I've cleared the fast lane.
You actually have a Mexico for city nights?
Yes.
One of the local, yeah, I know that project, yeah.
Yeah, huge issue with drones in Australia, there's, you know, hundreds of thousands of drones that are going with those.
And Sydney, we do a lot of power work, we go before they do that exercise.
But they get concrete. That's a track line machine, so that weighs nine a day, complete track. Yeah, it's a, it's an old machine.
So you'd be like a three day.
I was gonna bring it in, we wouldn't, we probably, we wouldn't do it for that length for a good time.
We wouldn't be fast enough.
Nah.
You could add in the money.
Yeah. Thirty two hundred and ten, almost a hundred and sixty seven miles in five hundred, stuff from there.
I was thinking that. Still getting that.
Do you not know of any county wide rail contractors or the people that work, companies that work within this county?
I'm sure, why should you put it out for big, you can get.
There's a lot of the tender making.
Depending on what kind of, like, bit of insurance you wanna put on.
Yeah.
And the process and the work you did, whether you do it to a general contractor or you use several aside.
We would probably, yeah, use several smaller guys, if we could, you know, we can use other air systems and processes, so we'd like to have a step in it.
So for, uh, ground, uh, exists, would you have to drill that out, put the oil in the tunnel, or building the tunnel?
Yes, yep.
How deep do you have to go down?
Uh, depending on the condition of it, because it's taken a lot of the rail off already, so it's replacing with, I think, twenty seven miles of actual rail, and they've taken that off previously, so we use like new ties, new ballast, new rail. It's a few man inside areas in there as well, we gotta clean up.
Do the regulatory, regulations, do they require you to reclaim some of the shoulder work, like replant the, the strawberry, the vegetation?
I'm, I'm sure, we, I haven't seen those, so I'm pretty intelligent, but yeah, I'm sure we.
The welding, the, the continues to go there.
Do you have to have it well inspected?
Yes, and extra.
So that's actually. That implies we're not the guy. Who, who, what is that technology from?
That one.
You know?
It's European, or European or American.
I think that applies to it as well, not really.
So don't worry, don't worry, we got that, all this, the ballast in, we actually got it from Wuhan, China.
Did you, did you test it?
Yeah, I got a big sprout out.
So we do, we do, you know, great separations.
We'll do it all, all in-house.
As much, as much as we can.
Hardly will ever, I think, we do, we go to contact.
Yeah.
We, we just found ways, so we really, on the self, the Republic of China, which is our people, our culture, our control, and so, yeah, that's what we'd like to try and build out, that, by working with local contractors to still have.
You can probably find, now that you're, you're here, most of the small contractors that are hauling the pulp are very diverse, and you're in the small county, you do everything, not just haul and pulp, it's your excavations and.
Yeah.
Crawling and the dirt work and some of that.
Yeah, concrete work.
Yeah, you'll see, I'm sure, quite a few folks that are hauling now, should be able to get the names from.
Yeah, right.
And the mine.
That's awesome.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for sharing that with us, do you have anything else?
Oh, thank you, you're welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
But you really need those.
Yes.
On your way.